Tuesday, that is Municipal Election Day, Tuesday, April 7th, 2009. Mr. City Clerk, Mr. Kasakian, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. And tonight, our flag salute will be led by Councilmember Yusefian.
Please stand and join after me. Put your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Always vote for principle, though you may vote alone and you may cherish the sweetest reflection that your vote is never lost. This was spoken by sixth President of the United States John Quincy Adams. Today is Election Day and as thousands of Glendale voters go to the polls to express their views through their ballot, we pray that the outcome of this election will serve the greater common good of this city. We pray that as differing views and principles may divide us, that we take pause and give thanks for the right to vote, a right and civic duty that every American citizen and resident of our city shares. We pray for the memory of those individuals who have sacrificed for us to have this right. We pray for the civil rights activists, the women suffragists, the men and women of our armed forces, the countless volunteers and others. We pray for many more election days in the future as long as our democracy endures. Amen.
Mr. City Clerk, I've been waiting all year long to come up with a piece of historic American founding trivia that I thought you might not know. And even though it's not quite a founding father, you mentioned John Quincy Adams, so that reminds me, maybe this is my time. I don't know if all of you know that John Quincy Adams was the very first President of the United States ever to be photographed.
I didn't know that.
You did know that, see? You can't...
But I studied history in college.
You cannot stump this man when it comes to American history. All right. Mr. City Clerk, could we hear your report?
Agenda for the April 7th, 2009 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 2nd, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Our first item.
First item is under Presentation and Appointments at 3:00 A.M. is the preview for the, Agenda Preview for the Meeting of April 14th, 2009.
Okay. With that, let's go to our Assistant City Manager, Bob McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, April 14th, this is probably going to be a record for different combinations of our agencies and authorities in meetings. The first being the Housing Authority where there'll be one item on the agenda. This is Amendment to the Affordable Housing Agreements for Vastar City Lights and Glendale City Lights Project in support of two affordable housing projects. These projects being located at 3685 and 3673 San Fernando Road. Following that, the Redevelopment Agency will convene at 2:30 also. And there will be one business agenda item, the Director of Development Services with a professional agreement, professional services agreement change order for Oliver Sandoval and Murphy for additional legal services. Then there'll be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. There would be a public hearing. The Directors of Development Services and Public Works are, will be submitting a report with a number of different actions regarding the Clean Energy Compressed Natural Gas Fueling Facility to be located at 1713 and 1761 Gardenia Avenue. Then there'll be another joint meeting. This will be the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Financing Authority. And this is regarding a report from the City Treasurer for the Glendale Financing Authority to open an account with the local agency investment fund, otherwise known as LEAF. The City Council meeting at 6 o'clock that evening, there are two items. The first, from the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, a request for additional, for approval for, to approve a purchase order to cover three years of additional service, services from Harris Computer System, this is their billing system. And secondly, another report from the General Manager of Water and Power regarding a request for proposal to engineer, procure and construct a 69 and 12 KV substation at the Glorieta Substation site.
Very good. All right, Mr. Kasakian, did you know that Herbert Hoover was the first President to have an asteroid named after him?
No, that I did not know. Touche.
It has taken an entire year? All right. Councilmember Quintero.
I have an appointment to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. His name is John Tatoulian. And he's got a bachelor's and an MBA and has years of experience, including lots of experience having to do with green building technologies. Very interested in appointing him.
Very good. Mr. Kasakian, where are we?
City Council and Staff Comments.
Anyone else?
Staff comments?
Yes.
City Council comments? I do have one.
All right. Councilmember Najarian.
We did have the opening event of the Mans in Humanity to Man Commemoration at the Brand Library on Saturday. It was very well attended. It consisted of about 80-plus art pieces from 40s or so artists, all dealing with mans in humanity to man. And it's a great exhibit. It's going to be continuously displayed at the Brand Library Gallery until May 8th. So if anyone has a chance, this will be a great, great thing for you to see. And quite a few very intriguing pieces of work there. Paint, sculpture, fabrics, et cetera. So it'd be great to attend. And it was a great turnout last Saturday.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Quintero.
Yes, I also had the opportunity to be there opening night. And there was probably the largest crowd I've ever seen at a, an art program at Brand Library. It was, I literally had to park outside of the park. I want to thank the staff, the artists, the commission and the committee that was formed. They did a tremendous job and I thought it was a good idea when I first heard about it. And it sure turned out to be just an excellent presentation. And it is open, so Brand Library, if you know where that is, you can go to the, to see the artist's works right next door to the library.
Very good. I understand there were 500 people that turned out for that event. And I was not one of them, by the way. I will be going, I have some family coming into town in the upcoming week and we are going to all go together. So...
And there will be other events, particular events, Mr. Mayor, poetry events as well as musical events, April 15th, April 18th. So that might be, if they're in town that week, those will be exceptional time to go.
Are these posted on our website?
They are on the city's website. There'll also be a question and answer event with the artists who have participated in an exhibit. And anyone can just go to the City of Glendale website to find out more about them.
Perfect. Mr. Weaver, anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank the Chair for putting together such a great collection of artists and working with our Arts and Culture Commission to put that event together. I was involved from the first day when we had the commemoration event start. But I, Mr. Quintero is absolutely right. It is one of the best collection of artists and artistry that I have seen. Even if we did not consider what the event was for, it still was very, very incredible. So it was worth going and seeing. So if you have not done that, please go out there and do this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. My only council comment is that I will have some comments at our final meeting of this term, I guess you'd call it, which is technically, I mean technically, next week. I mean, there's a reorganizational meeting coming up, but so, but I do want to thank my colleagues for attending the State of the City event. And I want to thank city staff for participating in the video, which I think is terrific video that, that you all took the time to, to work on. Especially in these difficult times, it is terrific that the public can see exactly what your reflections are with regard to our community. And I want to thank my colleagues for coming and participating and for their fine work over the last term. And I will, I will praise and compliment you further next week. So are there any... Yes, sir.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that the first video was very original. I thought that was... I've gone to many, many events such as that and that's the first time I saw a video presentation such as that. So I don't know whose idea was it, but it was a great idea. And I want to congratulate you for putting that thing together because it was very original.
We need to laugh at ourselves sometimes, you know, and so... Thank you. All right. Any other staff comments? Nope? All right. Mr. Kasakian, our next item, please.
Next item is consent items, a following routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so before motion is proposed. And we do have a card submitted for 5B.
Yes, I have a card submitted to pull item E like Boy.
I'll move 5A.
Motion is second on 5A. Is there any further discussion on 5A? There is not. Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Can we hear the item at 5B, please?
5B is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding Nutritional Meals Program. At B1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute an amendment to the existing contract with Morrison Healthcare Food Services, Inc., Contract Number 103684, extending the performance period from February 1, 2009 through June 30, 2009.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kasakian. The speaker is Richard Espiritu. There he is. Mr. Espiritu.
Good evening, Mr. Drayman, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. I only have, I suggest that we move forward on this particular issue, but I would like to ask a question. According to the staff report, there's 11,550 homes that are being delivered meals, over 34,000 meals. Due to the fact that we're in some severe times and according to the Glendale News Press, there are more people applying for utility reductions, does the Parks and Recreation have any contingency plans for providing more services, meals to the, at homes or meals on wheels, rather than these 11,550 homes that they're presently delivering to? Because I'm sure we're going to have much more people that are going to be needing this service in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any input on that from staff?
I have a question.
Okay, let's, I see George Chapchan, our Director of Parks, coming forward.
Evening, Mayor Drayman.
The item that the gentleman was talking about, I think 11,550 homes.
Home-delivered meals.
I think those are meals.
Right.
Okay, the staff report is not written...
Seven days a week, it's home-delivered meals, yes.
Okay, so that's that many meals that have been delivered, not to that many homes.
Mr. City Manager.
I just want to point out the staff report doesn't indicate home-delivered meals.
Right.
But meals delivered to homes.
Right.
And Mayor Drayman, council members, we do plan on applying for stimulus money. There is some money in there for senior programs. And also, we're getting some additional CDBG money. So we will be reaching out. We are seeing more seniors in need and we're trying to meet that need.
So in reality, how many homes are there?
Uh, boy, if you just divide by seven, that's seven meals a day. I mean, seven meals a week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapchan. All ready?
Move the items, Mayor.
Second. Motion is second on item 5B. Mr. Kasakian, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. All right, our next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited, items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, thank you very much. Because of the brief nature of our agenda tonight, we're going to take all of oral communications together. And I will start with Leon Mayer, followed by Elizabeth Manassarion, Carol Ann Burton, and Jill Merkott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the friends at the Glendale Library. And I'd like to, first of all, reiterate the fact that on April 16th, 7 o'clock, at the Glendale Central Library, we're going to have Clarice Leachman. We've talked about her before. Most people have heard about her, so this will probably be one of my last announcements about her. She's a famous actress, Oscar winner, Emmy winner, Grand Marshal of the Rose Parade, Dancing with the Stars, and a fabulous career. And she's going to talk about her autobiography, Clarice. Come buy it, listen to her, enjoy it. That's April 16th. It's free, parking is validated. Our next important event is part of National Library Week. And that involves a program put on by a poet group called Six Leaves in Search of a Branch. And this is a group of poets who will put on a teen poetry workshop at the library called Working Words. And that will be at the end of spring break, 8 to 10, I mean 10 to 12 o'clock, Saturday morning, April 18th. I'll repeat, 10 to 12 o'clock, Saturday morning, 10 to 12, at the Central Library. And invited to that event is not just public schools, that is, middle schools and high schools from the Glendale School District, but private schools like Holy Family, who I already talked to, and the Academy, and the Armenian Intermediate Schools where poetry might be of interest to some teenagers. So teenagers and your folks, come to the library, 10 to 12. And that's for, again, it's obviously, it's free and it's a... Bill Cushing from the College is a member of that group. Tina Demergian from the High School Board of Education Teaching is a member of that group. So we urge you to come. And these flyers are all over. Come to the library if you want more information on this event. And if I could have about 30 seconds for a point of personal privilege, I too attended the event at Brand Library. And I'd like to tell everybody that as a non-Armenian, this event goes across all cultures, all interests, anybody who's interested in humanity, please go there and not enjoy, but take in the scope of this event. I urge you to do that. Any questions? Good luck in the elections for anybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I am working the elections, so I'm going to rush off right now and go back to my...
Thank you for doing that.
Back to my precinct.
Thank you for doing that. Okay. All right. Our next group is Elizabeth Manassarion, Carol Ann Burton, and Jill Merkott. And I'm sure they're going to help me with the pronunciation of the last name.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff, my name is Elizabeth Manassarion and I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission on Status of Women. And with me today is Dr. Carol Ann Burton, who's the President of the YWCA in Glendale, and Jill Merkott, who's the Student Commissioner on our commission. And I'm here to inform everyone today that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And while working or on duty, US employees experienced 36,500 rapes and sexual assaults from 1993 to 1999. This excludes the more than 12,000 annual reported acts of sexual harassment at work. Sexual violence that happens in the workplace is unfortunately common. It also causes decreased productivity, high rates of absenteeism, and lower employee morale. Interrupted work as a result of sexual violence can also jeopardize the economic stability of individuals, families, and communities. Economic insecurity can lead to a greater dependence on public assistance programs and poor outcome for families and society. It also increases healthcare costs for both individuals and employees. If employees bring lawsuits against a company for sexual harassment or violence, businesses may incur large legal fees. Therefore, it is critical that we send a message about how we can all play a role in building respectful workplaces and prevent sexual violence. The Commission on the Status of Women would like to invite all of you and the members of the community to the following events. The first one is Women's Self-Defense Workshops with Shield Defense, co-sponsored by Assemblyman Paul Kacorian of the 43rd Assembly District, April 16th, 23rd, and 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Glendale Police Department Community Room. The second one is Denim Day and Dollars for Denim Fashion with a Purpose. That's April 22nd, all day, and would invite all the members of the community to wear denim that day and pay $5 and raise awareness about sexual assault and myths and realities of sexual assaults. And for more information, you can go to www.cia.glendale.ca.us/women and get all the information about Denim Day. And the third, and one of the very interesting programs that we're doing with YWCA in collaboration with Dr. Burton and her board, I'd have her explain to you, and then I'll have Jill tell you what she's doing at the high school levels. So, thank you.
Very good.
In collaboration with the Commission, the YWCA with its domestic violence project has, on April 17th, starting at the Y, it's called Take Back the Night. We will have the Clothesline Project and the Shoe Project, which will have different stories from the ladies who are survivors of both domestic violence and sexual assault. The program's going to start at the Y with several speakers. Several of our clients are going to perform. And it starts on Friday night, April 17th, at the Y at 5:00. After the program, we're going to walk from the Y down along Glendale Avenue to Parker Center, where hopefully all of you gentlemen will come out and speak to us who are walking and laud us, or if you want to come and walk with us, we'd love that too. And then we will return back to the Y and they will get refreshments and further stories. And it lasts from 5:00 PM to 7:30. And that's Friday, April 17th, at the 735 East Lexington.
Very good.
And we have these flyers that I can share. So Jill will give us an update.
Hey, y'all. So basically, for the teen level, it's time to get hyped up because what I'm planning, what the Commission on the Status of Women is planning to do is to have an essay contest. And no, it's not going to be like one of those essay contests where it's like we grade on grammatical errors or any of that. It's all about creativity and it caters to your mode of expression because in addition to it being an essay contest, it's also a creative project contest. So it could be, you could turn in a poem, a short story, a narrative, a drawing, a photo. And basically, I'm going to show you all these eye-catching posters that I made. That's one with a catchy slogan. And here's another one. And here's another one. And basically, within side, within the posters, there's also little sockets where I'll put some flyers inside about the essay contest rules. And you can do, you can apply to any of the categories, so it'll be awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Espiritu, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. First thing that I'd like to do tonight in oral communications is congratulate Mr. Arti Kasakian for running a very successful campaign for the reelection to the City Clerk's office. Of course, nobody was running against him, but that's beside the point. Gentlemen, I have walked against the wind for such a long time in my life. I want to clarify a couple of things because during this last election, there's been numerous people who've come up and tapped me on the shoulder and says, "How come you haven't been here at City Council after you were tarred and feathered by the Glendale News Press?" I have a 94-year-old mother who happens to have Alzheimer's disease. She is a diabetic with arthritis. I have to make meals, make sure she takes her pills, and I even have to change her diapers. With that said, I want to tell you that I haven't been run off yet. One of the things that I'd like to tell you, and this is a prediction, in the near future, there's going to be a new 501(c)(3) corporation. It's going to be called Condor. Like the Trident, it'll have three prongs. The first one will be voter participation. We will go out, make sure that people have transportation to their homes and back to the polling place and back and forth. We will also do voter education and participation, education. We feel that it's necessary to make the people of the City of Glendale aware of issues and educate them to what rights they have and how to participate. The last thing that we will do is we will conduct a large campaign, starting early, at least six months before the election, of voter registration. And we will embrace everyone. We will, and if we run into any problems that we had like last time, and I've already contacted Acorn, we have 100 volunteers already committed for voter registration in 18 months. And we will do voter registration. My strike force consisted of Armenians, people who spoke Farsi, Koreans, Filipinos, Latinos, both from Mexico, Nicaragua, El Salvador. And we even had some African-Americans. And to say, not least, but foremost, we also had people who would be considered the Gray Panthers. We will do what is necessary to have, as Mr. Kasakian said in the Glendale News Press, a greater participation within the City of Glendale for voting. And I thank you very much for your time and hope to see you in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Espiritu. Margaret Hammond, followed by Herbert Milano.
Well, my name's Margaret Hammond, longtime resident of Glendale. I'll keep it short. I'm sure you're all anxious to get off to your party. So my subject happens to be one that's dear to my heart, and that's the idea of people getting out to vote. I really will say to people out there in the audience, you still have time. Go and vote. I know where I stopped on the way here to vote. There weren't that many people and it was sort of an in and out. So don't say, "Oh, well, I couldn't get a parking spot or it was too crowded." Get out and vote. It's something that you need to do. And remember this, that if the people get in that you don't want to run your city, then it's your own fault if you haven't voted, right? You don't make the effort to make a change or continue the way it is, whichever you like to do. You need to get out there and speak and keep on. And I must say that today alone, I didn't really get out around very much. But within about a block of the polling place, I must have had six people come up to me and talk to me and say, "Oh, well, we hear you, we know, and you know, you feel this..." Yeah, very important. And again, as I say, don't bother calling me to complain. If you don't vote, it's your problem, not mine. The other thing is about the signs that are up all over town. Some of them gigantic. I don't know, how long do they have to take those down? In the next few days? I mean, there are thousands. And I'm hoping that it's not going to be like it was and it has been occasionally in the past, that they've been left up for a long time on vacant lots and properties that people think, "Oh, well, who cares? Nobody will notice them." They're an eyesore, they're littering, and it's against the rules. And I'm not quite sure what the rules are, how soon they may have to get them down. And the other thought was on Dr. Espiritu's comment about being tarred and feathered, I thought, my gosh, as many times as I've been verbally tarred and feathered, if all those tars and feathers were pulled off, I'd be pretty naked, wouldn't I? What a thought. Okay. Hope... Okay, hopefully, all, whoever, your dreams come true tonight, whatever you like. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Margaret. Our last speaker is Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman, members of the City Council and City staff. My name is Herbert Milano. First of all, Mayor Drayman, I want to thank you for the approach and the decorum with which you handled your office this past year. I think you brought a level of rapport with all of us here that we appreciate, and the tone and the manner and the pace that you gave was very nice. I know that earlier on during, when you became mayor, I disagreed significantly with the issue of moving oral communications to the back end. But there was a benefit out of that issue, because it forced many of us to actually listen through all the issues that generally come before on the agenda items. And some people have told me otherwise, that they would not have stayed, you know, otherwise, and they learned a few more things about how the city is governed. I would like to make some suggestions for a future mayor with regard to what I would like to see, and suggestions as well as to the City Council for this coming council year. And that is to increase transparency, and I have some suggestions that I made before. The suggestion is that maybe we can have a monthly report on one or two of the city's departments, on their performance objectives, on their policies, and how we're going to measure those objectives. Another suggestion that I have is that if perchance we have a new division head position being opened, that we have at least one of those interviews done in public or televised, so that all of us can get to assess the type of questions that are being asked. Let's say if a new police chief comes in, and we have a chance to basically see the process by which someone is selected. I also wanted to see perhaps a few small changes with regard to oral communications, because I know that many people used to depend around 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. to actually get a sense of how the residents feel about how the city is running, other than just getting the sanitized version, you know, during the regular hour. That perhaps at 7:00 sharp, we could have 10 speakers at three minutes each, you know, kind of like on a first-come, first-served basis, and then the rest of them at the tail end. This way, you know, residents who are still watching Channel 6 can get an opportunity to get a sense of how the experience of living in Glendale is being, should we say, reported or expressed by residents. So 10 residents, three minutes each, starting at 7:00 would be nice. Another final suggestion perhaps is that perhaps the city councilman can check the BlackBerrys at the door before coming in here, so that we don't have the experience of watching you guys, you know, go over your BlackBerry notifications while we're speaking to you. Overall, I think that we are moving, I think, in the right direction. I think you gave us some very good opportunities for us to express our opinions and express our issues. It is my hope that we, city moves towards greater transparency. I know I have seen some significant changes in the financials, that the city is really moving towards creating performance objectives for departments. I'd like to see more of that. And overall, I think that if we take all those baby steps in the future, we may have fewer of us coming here, you know, complaining or making suggestions. Thank you very much for the past year, Mayor Drayman.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. That is my last speaker for oral communications, so I will close oral communications at that time and go to my colleagues and see if there are comments. Let me start on my left this time, with Mr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Mr. Najarian. Eusefion?
Yes, I have a question from city attorney. What is the rules on the signs? How long before they have to come down?
No, actually, under Court of Appeals decisions out of the northern part of the state, the First Amendment protects those signs, they're non-commercial messages. We'll look at vacant properties, for example, we may be able to remove them if people leave them up for a period of time. We don't have a time limit.
Okay, the other question is...
We don't have a time limit that we can enforce.
Okay, the second question is, I understand that we do not have jurisdiction as far as content is concerned on the sign. Do we have jurisdiction in size of the sign for future?
Well, and actually, the answer is yes. Currently, the code provides that the sign can't be larger than six square feet, essentially two by three. The courts have, I've found one court decision back out of the eastern part of the United States that upheld a sign limitation of 10 square feet. From the language in some of these decisions, I think the six-square-foot, which was a good idea a number of years ago, many years ago, when it was adopted, is probably a little small. So we'll be coming back to you with a square footage that we think will withstand constitutional muster.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Doesn't the code also say it can be up to 32 square feet if it's elevated above a certain...
It's in a commercial zone.
Only in the commercial...
I interpreted the question, and maybe wrongfully so, as signs in a residential zone.
I was actually talking also about commercial zones.
Commercial zones, we treat the size of the sign, like you said, we don't regulate content, but the size of the sign is treated consistent with our code. So it's one, depending on where it is, if it's a wall sign, it's one square foot for every linear foot of frontage. If it's, somebody could put it on a billboard, for example, as long as it's a legal, lawful billboard.
They couldn't put it out in an apartment building.
An apartment building, right now, we're not enforcing our sign limitations, because in my view, from the court decisions that I've seen, it's the three-by-two, or I shouldn't say three-by-two, the six-square-feet is probably too small to get a meaningful message out to the public. You might be able to read the first name, but you may not be able to read the rest. So somewhere between six and 10 square feet, according to at least the cases that I've seen, would be able to pass constitutional muster.
So for 102 years, council members have run, and for a good portion of that, had yard signs that didn't send the message.
Well, I'm not sure if they didn't send the message. No one...
Use your words.
No one raised the issue. And if you might recall, the issue was raised a couple of election cycles, go by the ACLU, in response to a citizen contacting them, requesting that they intervene, particularly on the numerical limitation.
All right, all right. Interesting. Thank you very much. Before we, yes, before we go to new business, just wanted to respond to one speaker, and that is Mr. Milano. Mr. Milano, thank you. And I know that the current program, I guess, I don't know how to word it, of oral communications, was different from what we had done. And I know that that was not to your liking, but I hope you also understand why I did that. It has nothing to do with transparency, it has to do with fairness to those who live in this city who also speak on items. There's also protected speech, their opportunity to speak on agendized items, when this meeting is, and that agendized item is the only time and place that they possibly will interact with their city government, unfortunately. And it's giving them a chance to be heard earlier in the evening as well. And I know that my colleagues heard your suggestion, suggestions, I should say, and as you well know, Councilmember Najarian, who preceded me as mayor, did essentially what you're describing, and whoever succeeds me may do that very same thing or something different. So I think to everyone who is listening that has suggestions about the process in these chambers, make some notes, because you're going to have an opportunity to speak to somebody about that very shortly. So, all right. And let's see, the only thing I wanted to address was to just mention to Mr. Kasakian, who's our city clerk. No, it's not another first, presidential first. I noticed in the newspaper that you were trying to get that one more vote out there this time around, and I hope that that happens. And I just wanted to point out to the public that it is 6:45, the polls do not close until 8:00, so there is time, if you're watching this and forgot. It's a good opportunity, dash out and take advantage of your right to vote. So, the polls don't close till 8:00. All right. We do have some new business.
Yes, I do. I move that the claim and lawsuit entitled Liotta Redenhour versus City of Glendale et al, case number 08C03266, brought by her and through her attorneys, Roland Pennington and Trottin, be compromised and settled, and the same be and is hereby approved and accepted for a total payment in the amount of $10,500 to plaintiff Liotta Redenhour and Roland Pennington and Trottin. And the director of finance is authorized to issue a warrant for said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the entry of a dismissal with prejudice and execution of a release in the above entitled case.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Kasakian, if you could call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Eusefion?
Aye.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Grines, Martin, Stein, and Richfield LLP, Timothy Coats, to commence an initial review of the trial court decision of Eusefion versus the City of Glendale, case number CV08-00194CAS. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for preliminary work and for additional work as assigned by the city attorney.
You have a motion?
I get it.
Motion and a second.
Question.
Mr. Eusefion?
The fee cap is the amount that we discussed?
Yes, sir. It's the preliminary work we discussed, and then the other work as determined necessary.
Because the amount wasn't discussed, so I just want to make sure. The amount is what we discussed in the closing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business?
We want to take a roll on this.
Oh, yeah, I guess we should vote, shouldn't we, Mr. Kasakian? That would be great.
Sorry, I broke the chain.
Sorry. Let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Eusefion?
Aye.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes, all right. Now let me ask, is there any other new business? No.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
You did bring this to my attention, and I do think it's appropriate. As you know, last week, there was a tragic accident on the Angeles Crest Highway as it drops down into La Cañada on Foothill Boulevard. And there was a tragic loss of life of two innocent people who were merely sitting in their vehicle, waiting for the light to turn. And even though it did not occur in our city limits, and the victims were not residents of Glendale, I think we need to show support for their families, as well as our neighboring brethren in La Cañada, and adjourn our memory, adjourn the meeting in the memory of the two victims. And unfortunately, we don't have their names.
We will find it.
But we can, we can...
We will contact...
...add it to the record. It was a father and a young daughter, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
All right, very good. We will do that. I will entertain a motion to adjourn in the memory of the victim of the accident in La Cañada.
Second, move.